Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February 9th, 2022 meeting of the Lewisboro Library Board of Trustees. Board members, although we're virtual, just remember, we do have some members of the public dropping in. So first thing I want to do is open it with public comment period if anyone from the public does have anything to say. Anyone from the public? Cindy, you see anything? No? Going once, going twice? Okay.
Wait, hang on. I just want to do the gallery view, just so I can make sure.
Okay.
Right, nobody's... Okay.
Okay, good.
I'm putting it back to speaker now.
Great. So hopefully you all got an opportunity to read the minutes. Can I get an approval of the minute? You all read the minutes, can I get an approval?
Oh, here comes Colleen, and if you could just also say the date of the meeting.
Sure. Let me know when she's in.
Sheesh. Let's see, where'd she go?
She's there.
Can you see her, Priscilla?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, there she is. Okay, all right. Switch it back to speaker. Go ahead, Jay. I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. Good evening, Colleen. We just started the meeting, but I'm going to announce it again. So welcome to the Lewisboro Library Board of Trustees, February 9th, 2022 meeting. We just passed through the public comment period. There was no comment. So we're going to the approval of the minutes. I hope all the trustees had an opportunity to review the minutes. Can I get an approval of the minutes? Someone? Hand, Kevin, can I get a second to approve the minutes as read and written? Oh, yes, someone? Anybody? Yes, it's not great. Thank you very much for that. Thanks for writing them up, Elena. Okay, so we're going to jump right to the treasurer's report. Kevin, are you available and ready for that?
Yes.
Hang on, let me, um, let me share the screen for Kevin.
Okay.
Uh, you want the balance or the funding first?
I'll do the funding. That one, that one looks good.
Okay.
Okay, um, I guess you all might have read the bottom of the footnotes, but I'll give a quick summary. It's not that far into the year yet. From January, for the January 22, we had a loss of 18,000. That's principally driven by the Westling bill of almost $22,000 that came in January. When you look to last year, we're down $33,000 from January 22, 2022. I'm sorry, 2021. That's driven by two things. Once again, it's the Westlings billing, which occurred in February last year. So we'll be in balance with that next month. The other big item is that our donations or gifts and contributions are down almost $10,000 when compared to January of 2021. We had two very generous donations last year in January, and we have 4,000 in contributions this month, which is very good. But last year, again, we had two very large generous donations, so that's creating a large variation, coupled with the timing of the Westlings billing when compared to January last year. Questions on that? Also in there is the increase in the town funding of $1,000 and $1,034 for the month. And that will be the variation every month for the balance of the year. And that's it for the funding unless there's some questions out there. Okay, we go to the balance sheet. Our funds are down compared to December. December, we we've gone down principally driven by the fact that the Westlings bill was in there and also the lower, you know, not as much donations as we had in the past. The UBS investment fund also declined. That's a reflection of the market. I spoke to the financial analyst. He says his anticipation is that it's going to go up and down for the balance of the year. But we should end of the year on a positive note, definitely not as good as 2021. So that's basically where we are at this point. The concern was the donations are down and it's the timing of the Westlings billing. Any questions on the cash or?
Nope.
Right, and of course, I just want to add, I mean, it's down for the month, but that, that always changes month to month. And, you know, there were a number of donations in February, so I wouldn't be concerned about January.
And that's all I have at this point.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Appreciate that. Anyone with any questions? No? Okay, good. We can move on. President's report, that's me. Okay. A few things. Number one, we met, the Building and Grounds Group met with Adam Oakes and Mary Shaw. Mary Shaw being the town board member, who is also part of the emergency management team for the town. And Adam is the emergency management team for the town. And just, we want to find out what role the library can play within that emergency management plan. We also found out, and some of these things always surprise you, don't they? That we are the only town in the area that does not have a formal emergency management plan. That surprised me. We have been there when asked and when needed, but we want to try to make things a little more formalized because we do have access to a generator. So we're going to allow Mary Shaw to take the lead for us because it's never as simple as it appears at first. There are some rules and regulations, and there's a, we kept using the word playbook and protocol that we want to put into place. So we're going to keep you all abreast of that as it progresses. I was hoping Mary, is Mary here tonight?
Yes.
Oh, Mary is here. Okay.
I'm here.
Okay, Mary, so would you, would you like to speak very briefly now, or would you like to speak later down the line?
If I could go now.
Yeah, because, yeah, because you don't have to sit through the whole meeting. That's the idea. Yeah.
I appreciate that consideration. First of all, thank you, everyone, for your service to the library. It's truly something for which I'm grateful, having served on the board two terms myself. Secondly, Jay was a little casual with the language. We're one of the few in the area that does not have a community emergency response team, which is a formal organization that's connected to FEMA. And, and, and if one has that team, the CERT, and that team, then funding through FEMA is a little easier to get, you know, apply for and receive. I don't know if you saw on the newspaper recently, up in Danbury, they received a couple of new ambulances as a result of FEMA funding. So once we get the ball rolling and starting a CERT here in Lewisboro, hopefully we'll be able to get mitigation funding for our emergency response. And the Lewisboro Library would not be the only place, hopefully, that we would have as a heating or cooling station if there is an emergency in town. But being the first, hopefully, will inspire others in the community to do that. So, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, Mary, for clearing that up, and I apologize for the sloppy language. And I guess that's one of the points, though, but it is, there's always a lot more to it than obviously meets the eye. And these things are confusing and complex, and I'm very glad that you're part of that team because you can explain it to us. And now it's coming back to me that you said there could possibly, very possibly be FEMA money available for the participants in the plan. And it's something we should always be aware of. So thanks. Is that enough for now, Mayor? You're done for now?
I think so. I'm not, I would never say that I'm done.
Yeah.
Because the work is, I'm knowing, is well, all well aware.
Okay.
But I'm glad to be back on the library team.
Good. Thank you, Mary. It's good to see you, Mary. Okay. As you all know, we have a presentation before the town board on the 14th. I think that's Monday. Kevin, Cindy, and I are planning to meet to formalize something. We're going to just basically present a little bit of how the library works, try to demystify it somewhat. We can, we can run that plan by you, and if you have any thoughts for us, that's fine. It's just a few days away. If you feel like coming down, we'd appreciate the support. Uh, let's see. A few things that are tied together. Cindy sent out that conflict of interest policy. So I hope you got to see that. You do have to sign it and return it. And while we're on that note, a couple of other things along those lines you want to address. Veronica had written up a volunteers' code of ethics for us. I presented it to your board members. I assume that's been passed around and approved informally. I'm just waiting.
We have not discussed it since.
No, no, informally, informally. But I did send it to Julie, who ran the fair and who's running the fair again. And I want to get her input on it because it's going to involve mainly the fair volunteers. So until we get that, it won't be so formal. And then lastly, somewhat tying into that, Cindy keeps informing us, and this is such a good thing, the trustees' New York State handbook. Is that what it's officially called, Cindy?
Yes.
Okay. All new board members are supposed to, or should, how would I say, should review that to some degree. But there's also some, there's a website and there's downloads, if I have it right. And now our newest member, Stephen, will meet with Cindy and go over some of this as almost like an indoctrination. But any of us are allowed to sit in on this. And if I can make it, Cindy, when you meet with Stephen, I'd like to do that myself. As we're saying, nothing, nothing is so simple anymore, but it is an important document. And, and I think Cindy says they run these, what is it, just web Zoom sessions or web sessions?
The New York State, the Library Development Agency, the author of the trustee handbook, one of the co-authors is Jerry McNichols, and he's been holding a quote, book trustee handbook book club, where they discuss one chapter at a time on a monthly basis. I think some of the trustees have, somebody, at least one or two have attended them, I believe.
I did, I listened last month, and it was highly impressive. They did a wonderful job. They're highly knowledgeable and informative. It was terrific.
Good, good. You definitely got something from it, Stephen, right?
And Priscilla, too?
Yeah, I'm going on the 22nd.
Great.
I believe that they're recorded, so I can also send out the information for anybody who'd like to watch them on their own time.
That would be a good idea, Cindy. Thanks for that. Okay. I, I think that's it for now for me. I just wanted to point out one more thing and thank Elena for the Great Taste of the Town raffle that you did. Elena, do you want to make that an annual? I mean, it was such a, such a big thing. I think it reflects well on the library. It reflects well on the town. The town makes out, the winner makes out, obviously gets some great meals, but the restaurants get some great advertising out of it. So if, I'm probably missing some of the points, but if you think we could do this annually, I'd love to set it up as the Lewisboro Library's annual Taste of the Town because it's been so successful. Is it still ongoing, or has the, is the raffle all sold out?
Jay, have you bought your ticket yet?
Oh, yeah. Well, you know.
It's still, you know, it's still going on. Cindy's going to pull the winning ticket on Friday. There's a nice display now at the library with some balloons because I like balloons. Can it be an annual thing? I don't see why not. I think it was, you know, very successful, probably because I think a lot of people are looking for easy ways to donate money to the library. And it is a nice way to get people back into the restaurants. That's kind of when I met with all the restaurant owners, I was like, we want to help you out. And hopefully, by the time that the raffle is drawn, you know, people are starting to go back into the restaurants and supporting these local businesses. So will that happen every year? I don't know, but.
Remind us, remind us, because this is what we should do, is keep repeating the restaurant names. Remind us which restaurants are on that raffle, if you don't mind.
Yep, The Horse and Hound started it off. I went to Sue first because she's always been so generous with supporting the library. And she donated a hundred dollar gift certificate. And then La Vista also did a hundred dollars. 123, also, there's a hundred dollars there. Bacio donated lunch for two. And Haiku is a $50 gift card. So it's a great, great prize for somebody to win. And, yeah.
Okay.
The deadline is Friday afternoon.
Okay.
And I'll be drawing the ticket Friday evening.
Okay.
And I gave some flyers down to, I just was picking up the gift cards, so down to 123, I gave them some flyers to have at their bar. And Horse and Hound, I gave them a bunch of flyers, too. So Cindy, more people might be buying tickets, yeah.
Terrific. Let me just add that Liz is planning on giving a reminder in her weekly email blast, which goes out on Thursday, and I'm assuming she'll have another Facebook reminder on that day as well.
Perfect.
Okay.
Can I add one thing to the raffle? I just wanted to mention that some of the trustees had the opportunity to sell raffle tickets outside of Greenway. Was it last week? We were there, Stephen, George, Elena and I. And again, it was a great opportunity to meet with people, you know, everyone who loves the library. We're so supportive. We got so many wonderful comments about the library and lots of support. So again, it was a great opportunity to see people and to be out.
Yeah, they can see the face of the trustees, right? That's important. Do you wear your trustee badges when you do that?
They did. I forgot mine.
Good, thank you, George. Yeah, I got to remember to wear mine, too, when I, when I go out. And in fact, it's something we should all do when we're out.
I have one for you, Stephen.
Stephen's a.
Stephen was a rock star that day, too, by the way. Stephen hustled to get to sell raffle tickets, so bravo to Stephen.
That accent helps, too. It really helps. I always, okay, anyway.
Steven likes being on a working board, right? It's a working board. We get out there, do stuff. And also Maggie, Maggie and I were out that evening as well. So it was great. And more to come. I think this is a great board, ready to roll up sleeves and get out and do stuff.
Yeah, and thanks for, thanks for embarrassing me or reminding me that I haven't bought my raffle ticket yet. All right, anyway, that wraps up the president's report. So next on the agenda is the director's report. So spotlight's on you, Cindy.
Okay, our annual meeting will be happening, hang on a minute, I just want to make sure that I'm. Okay, there we go. Our annual meeting is scheduled for February 27th, Sunday at 2:00 PM. And that will be a virtual meeting on Zoom. Our speaker this year will be David Michalis, who is an author of biographies. Thank you to Andrew, who put me in touch with him. And he's the author of biographies on Charles Schultz. And I'm forgetting some other ones that were important, but his most recent one is about Eleanor Roosevelt. It's called Eleanor. It was published last October, and he has very kindly agreed to speak on his, on that biography at that meeting. So the meeting will start at 2:00. That will be our annual business meeting, which hopefully won't take too long, half hour, 45 minutes. And then we will have our speaker after that. Anyone who is interested from the public, you can register for that on our, the calendar, online calendar on the library's website in order to receive the Zoom code for that meeting. We do have a presentation to the town board this coming Monday of February 40, just to go over a little bit about the library's finances and how the library operates. So, you know, you'll be able to either attend that meeting or see it on Zoom as well. Reopening phases, the latest news, as I'm sure you all saw on the news today. Governor Kathy Hochul announced that she was lifting the mask mandate. So it's really, of course, any businesses or organizations are free to continue requiring masks if they should so desire. I spoke with a couple of key members of the staff today. I think we'll probably be reverting to that masks will be voluntary, but we request people who are unvaccinated, unvaccinated to wear masks. We'll probably be starting that tomorrow, although, of course, the staff is welcome to wear masks themselves, and many of them will continue to do so. Any questions about that? We're good? Okay. Technology, our two new additional Wi-Fi access points have been delivered by WLS. That's the Westchester Library System. Our computer consultant, Sam Dodge, attached the new one in the staff room to the new wiring we had put in there. And the Wi-Fi on that side of the building now extends all the way across the front lawn to the road. So that whole lawn area now, the Wi-Fi extends out there, which will be very helpful when the weather is nice or in case of an emergency. The second one will be, we already have the wiring, but it will be attached to the exterior of the building and the back parking lot area. But we need to wait until the snow is completely gone, and it is safe for Sam to go up on the ladder outside the building there to attach that one. And that one will very well cover the whole back parking lot area because we do, occasionally, we'll have people in their cars. And it will be, you know, very helpful. It's still not that great on the sides of the building, but it will be good, very good in the front and the back, and also will improve the Wi-Fi access inside the building as well. Technology grant, Kathy Iglesias, our head of circulation and technology coordinator, and myself, put together and applied for a grant several months ago. In fact, we had given up hope of hearing about it, but they, we finally did through the Federal Emergency Connectivity Fund program. And we applied to purchase through a company called Mobile Beacon, Wi-Fi 11, Wi-Fi hotspots, as well as laptops. These can be lent out to patrons during emergencies to use the hotspot. Also to assist anyone in town who's having trouble accessing the internet at home. Or if you're planning a trip to some area of the country, or camping, or doing anything like that, that you're not going to have internet access, these will be available for patrons to borrow. We just got word that the grant was approved two days ago, so we're not even close to actually purchasing. We have to go, it's a federal grant, and so it's very complicated. Kathy and I are going to review it in the next couple of days and make sure we follow all the procedures we're supposed to. And we'll start purchasing these things, and we'll announce when they are available to the public to borrow or to use here at the library, if they wish.
That is great.
Great job, Cindy.
Yeah. Oh, thank you. Kathy and I worked really hard on that grant. The feds are not easy.
It's really a nice idea for the library to have, though.
Some other libraries in the county have had hotspots, and so this is our chance to give it a try and see if it will be useful to everybody in town. Staff presentations, a few months ago, we mentioned having staff members, one at a time, come and just speak at the board meeting so all the board members can see who they are and hear about their role at the library and what their vision or mission is for their particular area. Now, Liz wasn't scheduled to appear tonight, but I know she's here tonight, and she's got a lot of, Liz is our program coordinator, Liz Gabriel, as well as our fundraising coordinator and marketing and social media coordinator. She writes our email newsletter. But she, she wanted to go over some of the meetings we're going to be having the next couple of months. So before Liz says anything, I just want to bring up one program-related thing that I handle, and that is, I hope you're all aware that we have museum passes. Some museums make available library memberships that can be lent out to library patrons. It's usually the equivalent of a family pass. We do have a number of them, and we're making some changes to that program. We are dropping the Frick Museum, the Boscabel Historic Property and Garrison, and the Stepping Stones Museum in Stanford. The Frick had been under construction for a long time. Boscabel was not letting anybody in their building, and Stepping Stones Museum also was, had dropped back a bit. So we did not get the good usage for that. So, and COVID really has restricted the use of those passes. However, we're adding two new ones. We're adding the Hammond Museum and Stroll Garden, Japanese Stroll Garden.
Oh, great.
North Salem. I don't know if any of you have ever been there. It's a very small place. It's not open all year round. It'll be open in the spring. It's very inexpensive. They offered us a museum pass. And a really great one we're going to be adding is the Storm King Arts Center and Sculpture Garden in New Windsor, New York, in Orange County. It's, it's world-renowned. And I think that will be a great one. I hope people will take advantage of that. They are open in the, you can go there in the winter, but it's much nicer to go when it's not so cold with the snow. And we're going to be review, redoing our flyer about that, and we'll, when we're ready to go, we'll be announcing the changes of those as well. So let me unpin my thing, hang on. And Ms. Liz, do you want to join us?
Sure.
Hang on a minute.
Hey, Liz, how you doing?
Hang on a minute, Liz. I'm going to pin you so you're, you're there. I'm going to unpin me, and it's all you.
Okay. Well, we have a lot of great programs coming up in the next couple of months. This month, and next week, actually, we have two programs on Tuesday. We're doing one with the Alzheimer's Association, which is Healthy Living for Body and Brain. And that's going to be, it's like 3:00 in the afternoon because they only do daytime programs. But we do have like, probably over 10 people registered for it already, so it seems to be very popular. That evening, we have a virtual program that we're doing in cooperation with the Ruth Keeler Memorial Library. And it's astronomer Avi Lo, who is, works at Harvard, and he wrote a book called Extraterrestrial, The First Signs of Intelligent Life Beyond Earth. And it's about, his book is on the premise that in 2017, there was what they thought was a comet spotted over Hawaii. And through, you know, calculations he did, he determined that it had to be from another solar system. So we're hoping that, you know, people sign up to listen in on that one. The following Monday, President's Day, Jane is doing a teen adventure hike at Leon Levy, which is, they're always very popular.
Let me just interrupt. That's Jane Rothschild, our teen librarian.
Oh, sorry. And she's doing that in cooperation with the Lewisboro Land Trust. And then the following weekend, in addition to the annual meeting on Sunday, on Saturday, we have the annual Lewisboro, Lewisboro Community Volunteer Fair. And we have about 16 organizations who've signed up to present that day. It's going to be via Zoom. And we give them about five minutes each to talk about their organization and their volunteer needs. And then at the end, we take questions. And last year, it worked out really well. We had about, I think, over 60 people who logged in that day to hear about all the volunteer opportunities. And then we put it up on our YouTube channel afterwards, and we've had like, you know, an additional 125 views on it. And then March Adventure.
Oh, is there a question?
Sorry, Liz, sorry to interrupt. It's Elena. I just want to say that I'm really excited that the library is doing that volunteer fair again. Because I know I've heard in the past few months, you know, or probably going back six months, a lot of people wanting to volunteer and help out, you know, in organizations in the town. So I think this is like a great resource for the entire town, just to let people know of all these volunteer opportunities that are out there. So I think this is great, and I just hope a lot of people do step up and volunteer for things.
Yeah, yeah, I hope they do. And what we do is, the day that I send out the Zoom link, I also send out the contact sheet, which has, you know, a couple of sentences from each organization and what they're looking for, so they can follow along and take notes as each group presents. Then, I'll just go into March then. In March, we start going into some in-person programs, and hopefully that works out. We're going to have author Fiona Davis on Sunday, the 6th. And we're going to have her come in. She did a presentation on her new book, The Magnolia Palace, which is set at the, it's like a murder mystery set at the Frick Museum. So we're going to have her come in. She's going to do presentation. We're going to do a book signing and a reception.
Terrific.
Um, and then. And then Maureen is going to be doing an in-person program on historic town quilts. So she's going to have on display quilts from like the 1850s to the 1920s. So, so now we have to just figure out, Cindy, do you remember last time? Were those what we hung from the ceiling?
Yes, we hung them from the ceiling.
Okay, that's what I said to her.
And just again, that's Maureen Cole, our town historian.
Yeah, thank you Cindy.
So yeah, so she's going to be doing that on, that's on 13th, again on a Sunday. And then, and then we also.
I'm sorry, what is the date for that? March 13th?
March 13th, yes. And then we also have a few virtual programs, another author program that's happening on the 10th. And that's in conjunction with a few other libraries. And then we're doing bird-friendly backyards at the end of March. Another virtual program and we're doing that in cooperation with some of our neighboring libraries also.
Do you want to mention the community crafters, the Lewisboro Library Community Crafters?
You know what? I would love for Priscilla to mention that. She does everything.
No, I certainly don't. Well, it was Liz's wonderful idea to bring it back and, you know, have the library give back in a different way. And just today, I believe, 40 Valentines made by 16 community volunteers were delivered to senior citizens and I'm sure made them very happy to be cared about and thought of. And it's, we've already, we were working on our next project in partnership with the garden club. And it's going to involve first responders in town as well as our senior citizens. But it's really, you know, it's a very nice thing, I think, for the library to be involved in.
Thanks Priscilla.
And thank you Liz. Liz really goes back to Liz.
Yeah, thanks to Liz and Priscilla though. Really is nice to connect the groups and really get something going forward like that. The seniors, I know greatly appreciate it. And, and you know how giving the garden club members are, right? Priscilla, you know, very willing to do it. Okay, go ahead Liz, back to you.
No, I think that that was it. I wasn't going to go into like April and May, but we have programs, you know, scheduled for April and May, a mixture of virtual and in-person.
Okay, if I can just say two things. One is, I'm not sure if Mary is still here. Let me see if I can.
Can I give a shout out? Because I attended the discussion about the civil activism in Chicago, the documentary that I saw through Canopy. And the YouTube video on how to make Canopy work is most excellent that Kathy Iglesias did on the Lewisboro Library Channel. And I also enjoyed the person who did the joint program with the other libraries on the evaluation of one's special items. That was really interesting.
Mary, did you get to have your item evaluated?
I did. It was worth more than I thought. So it was really cool.
Because there are so many people on that program that we didn't get to everyone. So we're having him back in May.
I, I'd like, you know, Liz, here's where I was going with, with some of the programs you mentioned. If you can mention to him, we'd love to have him at the fair. Remember I had David Rago do the evaluations and that went over really big. They just did jewelry, small stuff. They didn't come back the following year, but if we could make that a regular thing and if this guy is up to it, if it works out well, I thought it'd be a great asset for the fair. It brings in people, gives us something to do. Secondly, the astronomy program, those are fantastic. And I, you know, I'd love to get, as, as we're talking about going through the COVID period, doing more things outside. I know Andrew's working on the Adirondack chairs. We're working on so many other things. But an astronomy, and I think you've done one in the past. Didn't you, didn't someone come with a nice telescope and do some type of astronomy program out there?
Anna did it at, and it was held at Onitru because there's too many trees at the library.
Yeah, and you want to get away from the lights as well. That's the other thing, you want to get as much darkness as you can. But if we can get that going at the library, there's some fantastic events going on up there that are really fun to see. I go to the Westport Astronomers meetup. They, they're in, well, obviously in Westport, Connecticut, and they have some fantastic telescopes there. It really is something to see. They just gather at night. Some people bring theirs and they have one already set up. That's a university level telescope and it's a lot of fun and you're with very knowledgeable guys. And lastly, I want to say to, to Mary, Liz mentioned the volunteer fair. And I think you and Adam thought it, it might be worthwhile for you to partake of that as we're looking for, as you're looking for volunteers for emergency management. So I just wanted to make that connection. Okay.
And I want to praise Liz because I, we should all be very appreciative. She's been doing a great job of coordinating with some of the other areas, other libraries in the Westchester Library System to co-sponsor these meetings, particularly the virtual ones. It helps us control the costs and it allows us to, we've had some also, some things for African, I mean for Black History Month, right, Liz, that we're participating with as well? Or we at least publicize and our patrons can also take advantage of them. I think there's, there's two, one, one on.
Well, we did, yeah, last week, the one that Mary talked about that she was on and Andrew was on it as well. And they both had very thoughtful comments. Thank you for the speaker. And then there's one that we're doing with Pound Ridge Library and with Ruth Keeler. That's the 23rd of this month and it's the Rise of Black Popular Music. And that's with Peter Muir, who's a, I think a Pound Ridge-based musicologist.
Great.
And of course, you know, we want to let the trustees know, anybody else who's attending the meeting, that if you know anyone who was local, who is an expert or you think would make a great speaker here at the library, we would always love to hear about it.
Well, that's great. That's great.
All right, I'm going to unpin you Liz. Thank you.
Cindy, you know what I, know what I like about when Liz or someone sits in? We get, there's always a turnover of trustees. We get to meet the faces of the staff members of the library and they get to see us, at least virtually now. But even in person, it's even better. So it's a good idea to keep that going.
Well, I spoke to Marie Nanya, who is our children's librarian. And I've asked her to present if it's all right with the board at our March 9th meeting to talk about her role in the children's room and her vision and her mission at the library for the children's room. And before we get off the topic of programming, I don't want to get too much into it, but I also want to mention that Kathy Iglesias is, as our technology coordinator, also does some technology training. And we can have her talk about that at another meeting. But I do want to mention that she had a very well-attended virtual workshop recently on how to use Google Drive for extra storage. And I believe she had 12 people attend that virtually. And they were also pleased with it that they have asked her to hold some more workshops like that in the near future about more details of the Google Drive features such as programs on Google Sheets and Google Docs and, and, and everything that goes along with that. So she's going to be developing that and thank you for Kathy for doing such a great job. And I'll have her talk about her role as technology coordinator at a meeting in the future. Any questions about programming?
Well, thank you Liz. You do a great job.
Yeah, if I can just say, that's an incredible roster of programs. It's so easy to kind of glaze over it when it's a weekly email or something. But when you hear that list altogether, that's, that's a big undertaking. And it's so great to hear the flip side of that, Cindy, of that the quality of it, you know, with Kathy's participants is really high as well. It's not just quantity, it's quality. So really great work, guys.
Thank you. Thank you on behalf of the staff who works, work very hard to make it happen. And that's all I have unless anybody has any questions for me.
All right, good. Moving on then Cindy, okay, committee reports. Elena, you want to give us any more info on the Taste of the Town?
I think we talked enough about that. Future things coming up, again, we're hoping to have comedy back in the library in June. Maggie is tossing around like a trivia, trivia kind of idea that we're still working on that. Mary Shaw is ready. She's got her team ready to go. So we'll, we'll, I will convene our fundraising committee together and we'll start to finalize some more things, more raffles coming up again. We'll hit, hit up gossips again in the near future. And then we also probably have another Hamlet Hunt coming up at some point. According, whenever Priscilla has fit it in her schedule, but lots of things coming up. So we'll keep everybody posted when we have more details to share. But thank you to everybody who has donated money to the library, bought raffle tickets and all that. It just made, a lot of people just also made donations, which is nice too.
Are there any other board members besides me that you have to shame into buying raffle tickets?
Jay, you're the last one.
Are you kidding me? Yeah, you're not supposed to name names. Okay, all right. I, I hope I don't win then. All right. Okay, so Library Fair Committee, I don't know if we have anything to say about that. I did contact Julie, haven't heard back from her. But I know she plans to start having meetings, I believe in March, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, that's when she wants to get started.
Yeah, so we'll have more updates on that. Building and Grounds Committee. You know, it's more about building than grounds at this time of year. We met and most of the session we met Sunday was about the emergency management meeting with Mary Shaw and Adam Oaks. But we did walk through the library, we started putting our heads together, come up with some ideas. And we'll do that next time around and we'll report back about that. I think the biggest thing there, Andrew, yes, I was gonna, I was gonna say, go ahead, Andrew. Go ahead, you're up.
I made an appointment for tomorrow at noon. That Peter Rose and I are meeting for double teaming Jonathan, the owner of Kellogg's and Lawrence, to hit him up for the chairs and the grill at the same time. So she's going to meet me there, Dan's going to take her. And we're going to chat with him about getting those squared away, the grill for the raffle and the chairs for the front. So more on that later.
Yeah, and Andrew, remember to discuss with Cindy where we can possibly store them. We talked about a few places in the library.
Let's get those suckers and we'll find a place for them.
There's no place in the library, just telling you.
We might surprise you Cindy, we might surprise you. Well, anyway, but I, I know, I know how you feel though. You make very good use of your storage space.
We're getting those chairs and we'll find a place, don't worry.
Yes, absolutely.
Don't worry, I'll take care of it.
And it's all about, it's all about expanding to the outside also, right, Andrew? Getting us to go outside. Yep. Okay, good, good. Let's see, Building and Grounds, Nominating Committee. Colleen, are you there? Is Colleen there? I thought she had joined us.
No, yes, I am, I am.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I, I had to eat, so I didn't want to be shoving my mouth full while you guys were on camera.
Where are you? It's light out where you are. Where are you, Colleen?
That is Jamaica. That's Jamaica. Where I was, that's not where I am now currently. Thank you.
One, one thing I wanted to mention, you probably didn't get it. I think I sent you a text or an email earlier, but I think we talked about your, our connection with the Lions. And we're interested in getting an outside member on the nominating committee.
Yes, we, that's on our agenda. We have our meeting this next Wednesday. We always make the third Wednesday. As well, and Jen, I did see yours, that you weren't sure how you felt. So it's really, I think the other thing was that there's a number of Lions members who are Golden's Bridge residents. And I felt that we do need representation from Golden's Bridge on the library trustee board itself. So we'll see what comes up from that, from the meeting Wednesday.
Okay, great, great.
Just so, just so you know, we are actively pursuing to fill the open board seat. And if anyone is interested in joining us on the library board, they should contact me.
Is it two positions Jen? Are there two?
Right now it's one, soon to be two. That's you. The second one. So right now one.
How soon? How soon?
You tell me.
No, I thought we were, I thought we were usually sitting at 13 persons and I think we have 11 now, right?
Right, so we're looking for one to get us to 13.
We've been at 12 for a few years now.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
All right, okay. We wrap that up. Good. Thank you, Colleen. Policy Committee. Anyone have anything to say? I have a memo here about disaster policy. I think Cindy raised a point on that.
It's something I think we should pursue. And if any of a board member is interested in working with me on that, I would be pleased to have a small committee.
Cindy, would that go hand in hand with emergency management or would it be very separate from that?
It's related. It's the library's own disaster policy.
Okay, all right. So we have Mary on the board, maybe we'd have one of our board members be the, be the person working with Adam and Mary on disaster.
I'm happy to help Jane, Cindy.
Oh, oh terrific. All right Veronica, thanks. You can make contact with Mary after then and just.
Right first, I think we really just need to focus on the library's own disaster policy and then, and then dovetail it, you know. Loop me in if I'm, if I'm needed, I'm happy to help on that front too. Excellent.
Thank you Veronica. Okay. Personnel Committee, Finance Committee. Anything to report there? Kevin, anything at this point? Veronica? No, we're pretty.
I just wanted to say things are in progress and we'll be reporting again soon on that.
All right, good. This is good, 8:30 almost. Good. So any old business that we have to discuss or put on the table? Anyone? No? Across the board? No? Any new business that you want to mention? Andrew, go ahead.
Well, I just want to say, you know, here we are as a, as a board, you know, sort of preaching to the choir, as it were. But just from some of the comments and presentations tonight, what an impressive array of offerings and programs and coordination that our library does in this community. It's, it's mind boggling really. All of the different and varied things that come synthesized through here, ideas that are generated here. It's quite unbelievable when you actually, for anyone who's listening. You know, folks who don't listen might not know that, but all it takes is a little bit of listening. These amazing progressive, forward-thinking, inclusive programs for all kinds of folks. It's, you know, young, old, everyone. And I just, you know, I, it's not new business, but I just think it's worth mentioning as we sit here, just sort of, we all know this, right? We're preaching to the choir. But it would be nice if folks would just, you know, keep participating in the library in our, in our community and keep their ears open because there's stuff here for you.
Yeah, we've been tremendously lucky. I totally agree with you, Andrew. I'm entering into my eighth year as a trustee and I'm, I'm always, I don't know why I should say I'm always surprised. I guess I'm always tickled pink on how like major interested our trustees are in the library and then the surrounding community. It's just fabulous.
There is a lot going on. Think about, just think about all the programs we mentioned tonight. I mean, those programs are terrific, aren't they? And they span the spectrum of age from the toddlers to, well, we have programs on Alzheimer's for the seniors and everything in between.
But that's what I'm saying, it never stops. This isn't just tonight. This is all the time. And all folks have to do is listen and hear it and please participate in it.
And become, become a part of it. Yeah, yeah.
We didn't hear too much about our services to children tonight because Liz, you know, coordinates the adult programs, but.
We don't have to go through it every time. It's there. It is there all the time. It's so wonderful.
For children.
And it's, you know, with the resources that we have, you know, we're all also, you know, busy people. The staff works incredibly hard and adjusts all the time. You know, good Lord, COVID hitting and those adjustments that had to be made and powering through that, it's quite unbelievable. So I, you know, I just want the entire community to listen to this and really participate and, and make the library yours because it's there for you.
Yeah, thanks Andrew. The, the ones who come and partake of it certainly do appreciate it, right? We make sure we reach out to the new people, but thanks for saying that. I do appreciate it. Anyone else?
Jay, on that note, there is going to be a gathering for new residents on the 27th of February. It's sponsored by the town and I will make sure that I mention.
That's uh, sponsored by the town and I will make sure that I mention the uh, various programs and activities. That they can find at the library. Um, I, as, it's no secret how proud I am of the library. And and without the staff, uh, the library is just a room with books. The, the, the staff and Cindy are the people who make a difference in, in. What the library does for our community. They know our community and they listen to what we need. And they make it happen. I know there were times when there were mental health issues a few years ago and I was able to arrange. A psychiatrist to talk about suicide prevention awareness. And, and it's. Something that I continue to be very proud of, that, that it's not. Just lending books or DVDs or resources online, but meeting the needs of our community. And, and I too am. Proud as punch.
Mary, did you say February 27th was the date that's a new?
Yes, unfortunately, it's the same day as our annual meeting, otherwise I would go, so maybe I'll, I'll speak to Mary beforehand.
I can't remember. I think it's five or, or six.
Is that at Honor True, Mary? At Honor True? Yeah.
It is. I just made a reservation for myself for the annual meeting because I love that author. I've read a couple of these. Biographies already, so I'll do the best I can to attend both.
Yeah.
Great.
And Mary, good job. Keep, keep us informed because we don't see everything that's going on, but you're in the crossfire a lot of the stuff, so we really appreciate that.
Well, I consider it the intersection of events rather than the crossfire.
Okay, all right.
Eternal optimist that I am.
Okay. All right, is that it, everyone? Any other comments? Any other news? Okay, so should we approve the next board meeting date, which is our annual meeting then, February 27th? At um, Cindy, what time is it? Did we decide on that time? 2:00 PM?
2:00 PM.
Okay.
Zoom, register on our online calendar on our website.
Great, okay.
That's right. I was thinking we had to go early and set up, but I forgot. Okay.
Nope.
That's one, that's one of the perks of a virtual meeting, Colleen. We don't have to set up.
But then who's doing the refreshments?
You have to handle that on your own.
Yeah.
BYOB, yeah. Okay, all said, everyone, is that it?
Just the regular meeting then, March 9th, Wednesday. We need to update that as well.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm hoping that we'll be in person for that one. I, I don't know how everybody feels about it, but. We'll pull the board a couple of weeks beforehand.
Open some windows.
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone, for meeting. Have a good evening. Stay safe, stay warm.
Everybody.
Bye-bye.